Hi, everyone. I'm going to be singing a song. We'll meet again, don't know where, don't know when, but I know we'll meet again some sunny day. Keep smiling through, just like you always do, and the blue skies will fade far away. So won't you please say hello to the folks that I know? Tell them I won't be long. They'll be happy to know that as you saw me go, I was singing this song. We'll meet again, don't know where, don't know when, but I know we'll meet again some sunny day. So won't you please say hello to the folks that I know? Tell them I won't be long. They'll be happy to know that as you saw me go, I was singing this song. We'll meet again, don't know where, don't know when, but I know we'll meet again some sunny day. But I know we'll meet again some sunny day. But I know we'll meet again some sunny day. Thank you all. Summertime, and the living is easy. Fish are jumping, and the cotton is high. Oh, your daddy's rich, and your ma is good-looking. So hush, little baby, don't you cry. My funny Valentine, sweet comic Valentine. You make me smile with my heart. Your looks are laughable, unphotographable. Yet you're my favorite work of art. Is your figure less than Greek? Is your mouth a little weak? When you open it to speak, are you smart? But don't change a hair for me. Not if you care for me. Stay, little Valentine, stay. Each day is Valentine's Day. Had me low, had me down. I viewed the morning with such alarm. The old British Museum had lost its charm. How long I wondered, could this thing last? But the age of miracles hadn't passed. For suddenly, I saw you there. And through foggy London town, the sun was shining everywhere. A foggy day in London town. It had me low, and it had me down. I viewed the morning with such alarm. The old British Museum had lost its charm. How long I wondered, could this thing last? But the age of miracles hadn't passed. For suddenly, I saw you there. And through foggy London town, the sun was shining everywhere. How long I wondered, could this thing last? But the age of miracles hadn't passed. For suddenly, I saw you there. And through foggy London town, the sun was shining everywhere. And through foggy London town, the sun was shining everywhere.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:37. Thank you for that wonderful musical performance today. Mrs. Weber, will you please take role to establish a quorum?
Member Kelly.
Present.
Member Malchesky. Member Morgan. Clerk Hills. President Perry. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance. Kate, would you please lead us?
Yes, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Good pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we'd like to call on Mr. Steve Wade to come up and do two recognitions before we do the adult recognitions.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as revised? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
Mr. Wade.
Good evening, good night, nice to see you. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. One of our last celebrations of the year. I'm Steve Wade. I teach instrumental music at Thurston and at Laguna Beach High School. It's my pleasure to present two awards to some very fine musicians this year. Kendall Smith, if you'd like to come up, please. Kendall is a recipient this year of the annual Louis Armstrong Award. That's for excellence in jazz performance. A big round of applause for Kendall. And for her musicianship and contributions to jazz band, the Woody Herman Award goes to Belen Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we want to honor our students, so they're going to come first this evening, and we'll take any public comments at the end. So, Mr. Conlin, would you like to come up and recognize our amazing staff, students, and community partners?
Thank you, President Perry. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you being here. We have three retirees this year, so we're looking to recognize them. So we're going to start with our dynamic duo from El Moro. If Diego Perez could come forward? Diego here? Diego has been with the El Moro team for the last 25 years, and we have Dr. Hatchell here to share a few words.
You guys are going to put me in tears at the beginning of this meeting. Diego, it is such an honor to recognize you as you venture off into a well-deserved retirement after 25 years of service to our district. When I first came to El Moro, Mr. Duddy bragged that I was getting an absolute gem in you, and he did not disappoint. Aside from being the consummate helper, you truly care about each and every one of us as people. You know our families, our pets. You check in on us, and you exude warmth and camaraderie wherever you go. Whether it's our egg drop, our gold rush party, or a PTA meeting, you serve with a smile. I will miss hearing you say, "No problem," as you embrace every special task we ask of you, even if it has to do with the present that is left by an animal up in the fifth grade building. Diego, we wish you rest and relaxation after countless years of incredible work here in Laguna and at El Moro, and I know that we will keep in touch in retirement if anything to break your habit of calling me Dr. Hatchell instead of just Julie. Our love runs deep of our custodial team, and we are so incredibly grateful of you, Diego. Thank you.
And our next retiree, also from El Moro. Can Alex Garcia please come forward? Is Alex here? Diego beat Alex by six months, so Alex had 24 and 1/2 years of service here with Laguna Beach.
It is a pleasure to recognize Alex Garcia for his 24 and 1/2 years of service here in Yalbe U S D. Within this time, Alex has been recognized as a classified employee of the year and a faithful employee here at El Moro. Our teachers describe Alex as humble, hardworking, always willing to help, and a gracious servant. He will always rush in to help a teacher or a parent even when the work is outside of his schedule. Whether we've locked our keys in our classrooms or have a spider or scary animal to attend to, Alex is always coming to us to the rescue. His gentle spirit and care for our El Moro community will be greatly missed next year. Alex, on behalf of our El Moro team, we wish you all the best as you retire from a job well done.
All right, and last but certainly not least, we're recognizing Kelly Shear. If you can please come forward. Kelly is our coordinator of career education. Been with the district for six years. She actually launched and built the program to what it is today. So we're going to have Dr. Mayberry share a few words. Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you. I get the honor to share the deep appreciation we have for Kelly Shear in the six years she's been with us. Her vision and leadership and tireless commitment to career education has been transformational for our district. Coming at a time when we are really working around competencies for our learner profile, so much of this work has aligned to the work that she's done with career education, a job that she started. It wasn't even created when she came in. So in her time here, we have more kids taking dual enrollment classes than we've ever had. We've expanded to eight CTE pathways where we have industry-level equipment in our classrooms for students to practice, to get certifications. We literally have kids getting hundreds of certifications now per year. She's done a wonderful job aligning industry mentors to come in as career speakers or for our AER class, which is a research-based class. I mean, just an exceptional what has changed in her time here. And I wouldn't go without saying, she's also started, expanded our career events, including the Career Roundup, which is not just for our kids. It's also been for our parents to come in and all these industry partners to share jobs and job skills. So these things that we know are so important in today's time. So it was great gratitude that we wish her all joy and fulfillment in her retirement. Thank you, Kelly.
Congratulations, Kelly. And next to the podium, I'd like to bring Mr. Joe Vidal, principal of Thurston Middle School, for some of his staff recognition awards.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Vidal, principal here at Thurston Middle School, and I am joined here with Daphne Hammer, our assistant principal. And we have two very special staff awards that we're looking to hand out tonight. The first being our TMS Instructional Leader Award. And it is with great joy and admiration and deep appreciation that I introduce this year's Thurston Middle School Instructional Leader Award recipient, Mr. Glenn Warren. No, not yet. I'm not done. Wait, Kissy. I want everybody to be looking at you as I say this. So Glenn is far more than a librarian. He is a visionary educator whose impact has been nothing short of transformational. Since arriving at Thurston, Glenn has increased student readership by over 600%, turning our library into the heart of our campus, a vibrant, inclusive, and energetic space where students aren't just checking out books. They're engaging in thoughtful conversation, collaborating over board games, exploring creative ideas, and always participating in Glenn's always wild, sometimes wonderful initiatives. In partnership with Amy McNeely, Glenn has reimagined what a modern middle school library can be. But Glenn's influence reaches far, well beyond the library walls. He's taken the lead in guiding our ELA department to launch and refine engaging book clubs, jumped in to supervise and support our Model UN club where no one else could, and brought lit circles to life for students and staff. He even founded Thurston's very first EA Sports Club, where students connect and compete through organized friendly gaming tournaments focused on video games and friendly competition, building community in a whole new way. And even his Book Bites initiative, students share their favorite reads by creating peer-to-peer recommendations, strengthening both leadership, literacy, and connection. And somehow in his spare time, Glenn has helped lead our school-wide approach to teaching and enhancing digital citizenship for all students across our campus. Glenn Warren is not only an instructional leader, he's a cultural catalyst, and we were so lucky to have him. Thank you. All right, and for our second award, this is our Culture and Climate Award, something I hold very near and dear to my heart. And it is with deep admiration, gratitude, and love that I'd like to call up and honor Mika Vazquez as this year's recipient. Okay. I have something to read. I'll give you a hug. Mika is quite simply the heartbeat of our campus. As our administrative assistant, she navigates the complexities of a dynamic middle school office with unmatched grace. But what truly sets Mika apart is the way she leads with her heart every single day. Her presence brings calm to chaos, laughter to tension, and warmth to even most challenging moments. She fills our school with love, and in a middle school, that is nothing short of extraordinary. Mika is tireless champion for students, especially those who often are overlooked or struggling to find their place. She instinctively sees the light in them even when they can't see it in themselves, and gently helps them to discover their strength, confidence, and kindness that's been inside them all along. She is also the principal's personal therapist, a full-time job in itself, and the creative force behind our most joyful and memorable events turning everyday moments into beautiful heartfelt celebrations with complete stunning decorations and the kind of food that feels like home. But Mika's compassion knows no boundaries. Beyond Thurston, she continues to uplift and care for the others, mentoring and supporting adults in need, helping individuals and families far beyond Laguna Beach to find hope, dignity, and direction. She lives a quiet life of service, powerful empathy, and unwavering generosity. Mika is our compass, our steady hand, and a living reminder that when kindness is a daily practice, it has the power to transform lives. Thank you, Mika. We love you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Dixon for our PTA council.
Hello, everybody. I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing and honoring Ms. Erica Ray Hall, our PTA council president. So Erica, we know that your role as PTA council president requires tireless hours, unmatched support, and constant coordination of the amazing supports and unmatched support, and constant coordination of the amazing supports and services that we benefit from PTA at all of our school sites. We can't thank you enough for your leadership, service, and passion for our schools. You're a shining example of why our PTAs are the heartbeat of our schools. And on behalf of the entire staff, we appreciate, we admire, and we incredibly value your support and service to our district. And there aren't enough words to say what we owe you, but thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You guys are the best. I'm gonna ask Mr. Shen to come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is John Shen. I'm the Coordinator of our school's Authentic Exploratory Research Program. Our high school is one of the only handful nationwide in which 11th and 12th graders can do a year-long project, research project, on anything that they're choosing, from nuclear power all the way to fashion design. And this is only possible because Kelly Shear and her wonderful staff recruit industry mentors from the community to guide our students throughout the year. We want to recognize the mentors of this year's AER completers, who spend dozens of hours throughout the year inspiring, encouraging, networking, and most importantly, offering perspectives and glimpses of what it is like to work in their industry. So, I know their time is valuable, but I will read their names one by one. Frank Ariano, music producer. Kim Bowen, fashion designer. If you hear a name, please come on up and we'll take a photo together. Ursula Kalief, neurobiologist. Julie Chang-Holt, the project manager at the nuclear power plant in San Onofre. Tiffany Crossell, psychologist. Kathy Curtis, registered nurse. Shaiyan Darudi, computer science professor. Bill Edwards, CEO of Edwards Global Services. Tiffany Gier, Executive Director at the Children's Hospital of Orange County. Tom Gregg, who works for the United Nations. Ty LifeSet, marketing. Dr. Jen Malarsky, history professor. Lisa Murdock, registered nurse. Lon Anwen of the California State Parks. Vanessa Roth-Riberych, artist. Jen Sampson, interior designer. Anthony Sverzek, history professor. Kevin Walden, investor. And last but not least, Lisa Wax Chang, Pharmaceutical Regulatory Vice President. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jason Allman, I'm the proud principal of Laguna Beach High School, and I wanted to take a moment to recognize our Laguna Beach High School community partner. As Mr. Shen said, we lean on a lot of our community members and their value and expertise in their particular field. And we'd like to recognize our very own Laguna Beach Fire Department Chief, Nico King, for helping us in our variety of flow events and projects, also with our green and sustainability measures. And he's been instrumental in helping our students remember and be mindful of the fires of Laguna Beach. So, I would like to give a big round of applause for Mr. Nico King.
Okay, so, this next category is brand-new. And I feel like it's important because it was a lot of support and help that we received from these individuals to make sure the continuity of learning and the lack of disruptions for our students was what happened for us. So, the first person I want to recognize is Ms. Jennifer D'Ancio. So as we've transitioned and we began our search for the new superintendent, many of you might know that Ms. Weber, who serves as a foundation for our board and our district office, was unable to work for a period of time. In that time, it was crucial to make sure the operations went as smooth as they did thanks to the support where Jennifer had stepped in to fill that role in addition to her already existing role in human resources. And that proved vital to make sure that we didn't have a single misstep within our operations. We were able to support the board in their meetings, and at the end of the day, make sure our students didn't see anything different than they would expect in an everyday classroom experience. So, Jen, I can't thank you enough. You stepped in when we needed you most, and we're forever grateful. So, thank you very much. We'll bring the other one up at the same time. So, the second shining star that I want to acknowledge is, as I mentioned, the backbone for our district office in support of the school board and the superintendent's office. And she has been crucial not only as a personal psychologist for myself, but making sure that all the work gets done that needs to get done, and that is Ms. Victoria Weber. There's not enough time to go into all the ways that Victoria helps us as a district. She is a holder of all information, a wonderful person, and a foundation and sets the tone for all of us at the district office, and I'm forever grateful for her as she supported this and all of us into a very successful future ahead that we're all looking forward to. So, thank you, Victoria, and we look forward to many more years with you.
Do I just jump in and go? All right, our elementary, are you guys ready for our elementary awards? Here we go. Cora's ready. All right, listen up. Our very first award category is Celebration of the Arts. The LBUSD District Arts Show was held April 22nd exhibiting our students' work in visual and performing arts. Each teacher selected one representative from their class to showcase at the event. The submissions were absolutely incredible, highlighting the talents and gifts of our incredible students across Laguna Beach. As I call your name, come on up and stay up here so we can recognize each of you. We will also call Top of the World students as well. So, congratulations to Jake Ballard, Cade Bohanek, Noah Chappel, Shelby Dab, Ivy Adai, Cora Ervasi, Ewan Fobyster, Madison Gates, Jethson Heredia, Asher Hunter, Hazel Jolly, Lily Kearney, Scarlett Colick, Kai Lichtenberg, Sergio Lopez, James Mark, Joseph Martin, Maverick McBride, Cade Mortazavi, Jack Nastanski, Oscar Nichol, Cece O'Connell, Danae Orwella, Tatum Parkin, Willow Payne Troll, Trung Pham, Matthew Resinkovich, Summer Samuelian, Caroline Walden, and Sienna Zamorano. Do you want TOW up there too, or just Elmoreo? All right, we're gonna pause and take the photo op for Elmoreo, and then we'll move into Top of the World.
And from Top of the World, we have Jack Begry, Rocky Brenderson, Russell Bugby, Laura Kakar, Conrad Cutzall, Dasha Fadinsky, Janie Gibbs, Olivia Grubin, Kylie Halbert, Drewzy Irvin, Emma Kopernik, Ethan Kopernik. The TOW students are still at the dessert table, is that? Kane Kunivicius, Mila Lewis, Henry Lloyd Holt, Liam Manji, Ava Miller, Lucy Pardon, Rory Pierce, Giselle Pareja, Penelope Ribell, Domino Ryder, Lydia Saravia, Isabella Spring, Piper Stevens, Victoria Swanson, Gabrielle Trevino, Lennox Vega, and Noah Villarreal.
Okay, our next group is our District Green Team, our elementary teams. Woo-hoo! And these students, they're amazing because they do a really important job for our district, and that's keeping our district, our school sites, healthy, clean, and loving the planet. And I am going to introduce the Green Girls from Elmoreo first. These students led waste audits, they introduced a new assembly with the ECO show, and if I could have Lennon Bonfield come up, Harper Haverland, Molly Mahoney, Danae Orwella, and Emma Tran. Sorry, Elmoreo Green Girls, woo-hoo! We're gonna do both schools, okay. And then for Top of the World, we have Jackson Craig, Logan Dwight, Vanessa Evans, Meadow Ingram Rubino, Vivian Orr, Emily Pierce, Claire Patricic, Ian Rapp, and Annalise Wasaloski. All right, thank you to our, and say up for a photo? All right, our next category of introductions is the Imagination Machine Story Features. This spring, we brought the Imagination Machine Assembly to Elmoreo, which was a highlight of our year. The assembly featured the dramatic renditions of student stories that were submitted by our very own Elmoreo kids, making the assembly fun, personal, and engaging, right, guys? It was awesome. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our Elmoreo students whose stories were selected to be featured in this amazing Imagination Machine Assembly. Congratulations to Carter Canizales, Bodhi Dorsey, again Ivy Adai, Jamison Vader, Jacob Hepler, Tyler Mariner, Tristan Mercer, Camilla Asutuwal, Andrew Talarico, Liam Tell, and Lucas Yan.
And Lucas Yan.
And from Top of the World, for the Imagination Machine Story Feature, Evie Costin. Mark Dodge. Kylie Halbert. Royce Hickman. Sophia Malari. Shaya Negreti. Penelope Ribell. And Elle Smith. Our next category is the OC Arts for All. The OC Arts for All showcase allows students in educational programs across Orange County to participate in this juried competition, which celebrates the impact of art in our communities. The exhibition can be viewed in the Crystal Court section of South Coast Plaza during normal opening hours. And the TOW participants are Calvin Fratsky. Eva Jensen. James Kianisur. Ellie Pardon. Tommy Roselli. Liam Shadane. Noor Tadlowe. And Summer Wilson.
And El Moro participants were Blake Charnley, Harper Haverland, Noel Keen, Cade Mortazavi, and Aria Reynolds. Alright, our next category is El Moro Sea Lion Senate. And this year, we implemented our Sea Lion Senate to increase student agency by elevating student voices in problem-solving and creating a positive, student-centered environment at our campus. On a trimesterly basis, each of our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade classes elected two student senators to represent their classes at student focus groups. As a result of elevating voices, these students advocated to include several new items and activities at our school, including our recent Lemonade Day to celebrate the culmination of our testing season. Tonight, we'd like to honor our Sea Lion Senators and thank them for making a difference at our school. Congratulations to Claire Kirby. Scarlett Colic. Carter Ladislau. Daisy Liu. Addison Moran. Dana Orwella. Henry Rolfin Gamo. Taj Abchurch. Logan Viveros. And Carter Young. Alright, and next is the Water Quality and Wastewater Awareness Contest. The City of Laguna Beach Public Works and Utilities Department hosted its inaugural Water Quality and Wastewater Poster Art Contest during the month of April, engaging 1st through 5th grade students from El Moro and Top of the World. The competition, which centers on the theme "Ocean Environment Protectors", encourage young artists to depict behaviors that ensure clean sewer and stormwater systems. Judging criteria focused on the depicted activities, creativity, and artistic skill. Out of 120 entries, nine winners were selected, and three students received honorable mentions. Congratulations to our El Moro winners Luca Baxt. Jade Bolandje. Leeko Deng. Molly Going. Charlotte Hiromi Yasui. And Linus Wong.
Next up is the Arbor Day Art Contest. The city held its annual Arbor Day Youth Art Contest for LBUSD students. This year's theme was "Trees Do a Lot for Me!" exclamation point. Students used mixed media 2D art to demonstrate their appreciation for nature. Students being recognized tonight were the finalists in the contest, including Tiara from TOW, who is the grand prize winner. So, in addition to Tiara Westgar, we have Emma El Kahim. El Hakim, I'm sorry. Cara Dole. Grayson Kibbie. Well done, everyone. And next is the Compass Rose Art Contest. After exploring math skills in the STEAM lab, Mrs. Cohen partnered with Mrs. Woolsey to create a Compass Rose Art Contest. Students were challenged to design a compass rose that included the cardinal directions and captured the creative spirit. We received over 50 entries from our 2nd grade students, and this student's design will be featured in Mrs. Cohen's outdoor classroom. And that student is Caroline Ocampo. And next is the Jogathon T-shirt Design. And I know exactly who you are. After a lesson with Mrs. Woolsey exploring graphic design, our 5th grade students were invited to submit their concept for the annual Jogathon T-shirt. The winning design was featured on all of our shirts this year, highlighting our mascot and our TOW spirit. Fiona Leeson, and thank you very much. And now, the TOW Student Council. These students stepped up because their classmates saw them as leaders, and they've carried out roles that uplift both our school and our community. Each one consistently shows qualities I admire: being kind, tackling problems head-on, and managing their time well. Every member of this student council has truly earned their spot, and I couldn't be prouder of their work this year. And the representatives are Abby Cohen. Imena Freus. Haley Hall. Penelope Lemey. Fiona Leeson. Nicholas Marshall. Savannah Mottern. Lux Mullen. Vivian Orr. Dante Teruzian. And Jack Wilson.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Yerida Reynolds. I'm the instructional coach and the coordinator of supports for all of our multilingual learners. Today, we're here to celebrate a big achievement. Our reclassified students have reached Fluent English Proficient Status, a goal that took hard work, strength, and growth to reach. This journey has not been easy. These students have worked incredibly hard, reading, writing, speaking, and listening every single day. They've taken on a challenge of learning a new language while also mastering complex academic content. It takes courage to ask questions, to make mistakes, and to keep trying. But they are proof that dedication pays off. Reclassification is not just a label. It is a powerful reminder that our students are capable, bilingual, and ready to thrive in any setting. Their success is a celebration, not just of language learning, but of perseverance and strength of character. I would like to recognize Kristen Kay, our high school ELD teacher, Amy Cochran, our TMS ELD teacher, our four dedicated bilingual instructional assistants, Claudia Cuevas, Cecilia Reese, Wendy Hernandez, and Nova Wassman. If you're here, please stand up. Their continued support and encouragement made a meaningful difference in the success of our students. Tonight, we honor the wide range of languages spoken by our students: Mandarin, Vietnamese, Portuguese, Spanish, French, Romanian, and Russian. To our newly reclassified students, we are so proud of you. Keep pushing forward, keep using your voice, and never forget how far you've come. Congratulations. Marius Ingeman. Marius, there he is! Mateus Marangoni. Barrow. Coming up, Barrow. Noah Villareal, coming up. Samuel Spera. Davis Tichio. Jerry Ho. Dylan Gomez. Kai Men Preston. Ethan Chen. Alexandra Morales Javier. Erin Guzman. Alissa Femina. Sebastian Torres. Congratulations.
We're going to take a five-minute break at this time to allow a transition from the elementary to the secondary. We're gonna take a five-minute break now and change seats. Good evening. Could everyone take a seat, please? Thank you. Board Member Morgan? Can you take a seat? Thank you. Thank you, it's better than me with the mic. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. We are ready to begin our secondary presentations for all the wonderful things our secondary students have done. So, I think we are starting with Mr. Vidal, correct?
We need one minute.
Oh, he needs a minute, okay.
He's running back right now.
Okay. Welcome again. Mr. Vidal, are you ready? Okay. Let's go, yeah.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am Joe Vidal, the proud principal here at Thurston Middle School, and I'm joined by our Assistant Principal Daphne Hammer. And we have some very special awards that we'd like to hand out tonight, starting with students from our American Math Competition. The American Mathematics Competition is a nationally-recognized contest that challenges middle-school students with rigorous, high-level math problems. Participants are required to demonstrate strong reasoning, creative problem-solving, and a deep understanding of mathematical concepts beyond the standard curriculum. The students we are recognizing performed exceptionally well, earning top honors in this challenging competition, and their success reflects not only their academic talent, but also their commitment to learning and perseverance in the face of complex problem-solving. So I'd like to start by calling up our first-place winner, Destin Deng. I'd also like to call up our second-place winner, Dylan St. John. And our third-place winners: Clark Alden, Emile Avalon, Artem Orvechkin, and Gavin Trotter. Congratulations. And now for our Associated Student Body ASB Leaders. Thurston's ASB Leaders are the heartbeat of student life on campus. These students dedicate their time to organizing events, creating inclusive experiences, and amplifying the voices of their peers. Whether leading rallies, managing logistics, or advocating for school-wide initiatives, they approach their work with integrity, collaboration, and a collective vision. Their efforts have created a welcoming and spirited campus culture that has left a lasting impact. I would like to start by calling up our co-presidents, Cameron Cole and Hadley Maynard; our Vice President, Destin Deng; our Secretary, Alexis Berger; and our Treasurer, Billy Colax. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Gloria Harwood for Junior Master Gardeners.
Good evening. So these students nurtured and maintained our school garden here at Thurston through the Junior Master Garden Program, offering students a hands-on opportunity to engage in horticulture and environmental care. These students took responsibility for growing and maintaining our campus garden. It was all student-led, learning not only about plant life, but also about teamwork, patience, and stewardship, and sometimes listening to my really bad jokes in the garden and laughing along together. Their work has beautified our school and reminded us of the value of nurturing both nature and community. These are examples of how small, consistent acts of care can make a visible difference, or just even making a bouquet of flowers for their next-period teacher. So our Junior Master Gardeners are Callie Andrus, Aiden Dwight, Austin Engel, and Hannah Morris.
And now for the OC Arts for All. The OC Arts for All Initiative celebrates student artists across Orange County who express themselves through visual creativity and craftsmanship. The students recognized in this category demonstrated unique perspectives, technical skill, artistic expression, that stood out among their peers. Their art initiatives reflect and connect and help others to see the world differently. We commend them for using their talents to inspire and uplift others. At this time, I'd like to call up Crew Hill and Grace Wagner. It does not look like they're here tonight, so we will move on to the next group. I saw Grace, I don't know where she went. Okay. At this time, I'd like to pass along to Gloria Harwood for our OC Civics Pathway Award.
Thank you. So this is an OCDE, Orange County Department of Education recognition. The OC Civics Pathway Award honors students who are actively engaged in the principles of democracy, justice, and civic responsibility. These students participated in programs that challenged them to explore government systems, analyze real-world issues, and develop thoughtful solutions. They demonstrated an informed and purposeful approach to leadership, dialogue, and citizenship. Their contributions reflected both knowledge and a deep commitment to making their communities better. These students earned their recognition through academic excellence on their Constitution test in 8th grade, the DAR essay, Daughters of the American Revolution, moot court, and/or the cool presentation that happened in our tutorial this year. So if I can please have Roman Fisk, Ava Low, Hadley Maynard, Ava Mustafi, Grace Puffer, Eliana Simon, Estella Su, and Oliver Teo.
And now on for our moot court competition. So moot court is a simulated courtroom experience where students step into the roles of attorneys, presenting arguments and defending their positions in front of judges. Participants develop public speaking, critical thinking, and legal reasoning skills as they prepare for and participate in these competitions. The students we honor in this category embrace the challenge with confidence and professionalism, and their efforts reflect deep preparation, poise under pressure, and impressive command of the law. I'd like to start by calling up Eli Arum, Van Liston, Maya Trevino, James Wilson. I would also like to call up our first-place Team for Defense, Ava Low and Owen McCormick. I'd also like to call up our first-place Team for Prosecution, Grace Puffer and Oliver Teo, as well as our second-place Team for Prosecution team, Estella Su and Hadley Maynard, who also got the MVP award. And as well as our Most Improved, Carolina Orvalo. And now for our Peer-Assisted Leaders, also known as PALS. PALS are trained student mentors who serve as role models and advocates for kindness, respect, and inclusion across our campus. These students are often quiet leaders who uplift others, support new students, and create welcoming spaces in classrooms and social settings. Their work promotes emotional safety, peer connection, and positive behavior. We recognize their compassion, consistency, and the positive impact they have on our school culture. I would like to call up Clark Alden, Thomas Burge, Cade Chowdu, Ruby Corradini, Lila Daniels, Gabriel Devorak, Liliana Eckberg-Panetta, Joshua Fine, Carolina Hor. Christine Kang, Mila Clong, Cameron Cole, Mila Lemmy, Christian Lobano, Finley Leeson, Nico Lefevre, Rezi Leverdy, Ava Low, Ava Mustafi, Ayana Sabour, Cambo Nol, Abigail Olin, Aubrey Peterson, Brooke Reynard, Axel Schroeder, Anya Stedman, Taylan Tonkavich, Roman Valentino, and James Wilson. And finally, our Student Success Panel leaders. Our Student Success Panels are rooted in restorative practices which focus on repairing harm, restoring relationships, and reintegrating students into the school community with dignity and purpose. This approach moves away from traditional punishment and instead emphasizes accountability, reflection, and support. These panels operate similarly to a peer court where trained students consider school infractions or concerns brought forth by their peers. The student panelists we are recognizing today were especially trained to listen without judgment, ask thoughtful questions, and collaboratively determine how a student could make things right, whether by restoring trust, rebuilding relationships, or pursuing academic or personal goals. Their work empowers students to grow from challenges and reinforces the belief that everyone deserves the opportunity to learn, repair, and be welcomed back. And I'd like to start by welcoming and honoring Cade Chowdu, Aiden Dwight, Austin Engel, Quinn Jetzer, Foo Light, Charles McElroy, Abigail Olin, Jordan Rutledge Bab, Gavin Trotter, and Jack Trotter. And now I'd like to turn it back over to Gloria Harwood.
All right, so I introduce our elementary green teams, which I failed to mention, Mrs. Thomas at Top of the World Leeds and Mrs. Mays and Mrs. Stewart at El Moro, so huge thanks to our green team Leeds. At Thurston, we have a green team that's led by Mrs. Couch, and she has nominated Halle Black, Gianni Calandrella, Roman Fisk, Luca Greg, Penelope Jamison, Billy Kilmartin, Billy Kulaks, Victoria Mayer, Sophia McNally, Brooks Miller, Matthew Mantoya, Tano Morris, Mia Moss, Katie Sanquist, Macy Shear, Lila Simpson, Walker Young. So before I introduce the LBHS team, I just wanted to congratulate these students. They worked really closely with the Energy Coalition this year on a program called Energy is Everything and really stood out. They earned certification through the program on energy efficiency, so well done. They also interviewed our nutrition supervisor for enhancing our food menus, to reduce food waste, led waste audits. They've done a lot of great work for Thurston. All right, now for the high school. The high school just led a whole sustainability audit of the entire campus. They looked at utility data, utility bills, in water, waste, transportation, health, and I might be forgetting one. What am I forgetting, students? Energy, thank you. And they competed against other high schools in Orange County at the Epsom headquarters. It was a really lengthy presentation. They worked on it for about three to four months, and the competition was last week and they did a phenomenal job. So I would love to call up Keon Arshadi, Sophie Bashir, Christian Callahan, Rita Capano, Enzo Casalari, Kate Cheng, Kelsey Deering, Kamal Dimler, Ariana Game, Hadley Mello, Leah Moore, Anna Sanquist, Penelope Wade, and Emily Yang. And our green team is led by Mrs. Hawkins at Laguna Beach High School.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break now and get ready for high school. Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Excuse me, I'll do mine. Quiet, please. We're ready to start awards for the wonderful high school students. Dr. Allaman, are you ready?
Thank you, President Perry. Good evening, parents and students. It's an honor to be here before you and celebrate and recognize some of our amazing students. I'd like to start off by recognizing some of our essential students and Associated Student Body, our leadership organization on campus. If you don't know and haven't been to a high school event, a football game, or maybe just even morning drop-off, you know the campus and culture on our campus is pretty special, and it has a lot to be attributed to our student leadership and the vision and plan that they've implemented over the years. So I'd like to recognize our senior class president, Raina Shanistani, Chloe Lofflin, who leads our Breaker Culture Committee, and in media and marketing, Megan Mannion. Stay up. At this time, I'd like to welcome our athletic director, Dr. Denise Selby, to the podium to honor some of our student athletes.
Thank you, Dr. Allaman. I'm Denise Selby, and I'm honored to recognize 14 student athletes. We try to use the criteria where we're recognizing student athletes that have been named to First Team All-CIF, which is a really big deal. And so if they've achieved that level of recognition, then we bring them to the board meeting to kind of give them a way to go. And then we have a couple of other award recipients that we're going to recognize as well. So I'm going to call up the student athletes. You guys are all going to come up together. We follow instructions well, stand in a line shoulder to shoulder. So will Kara, Kate, Ryan, Max, Presley, Sienna, Dylan, Julian, Ruby, Chase, Luke, Becker, Branson, and Kyra. Come on up. Okay, we're not going to take a picture yet because I got a couple of things to say. I know you guys have to endure me, so just please, I'll talk fast. You know I can talk fast. So we're going to start with our baseball players. Will Becker, Sabirsky, and Branson, Wade, still, please step forward. Step forward, Branson's not here. Branson's in Georgia for baseball, and Branson was the only junior being recognized tonight. The rest of the students up here are seniors. Branson's being recognized tonight because he was named as a Junior, the Pacific Coast Conference Pitcher of the Year. He had a record, he had a 10-1 record. Coach Balanta told me that every time he was on the mound, he was sure we were going to win. He was only wrong one time. He's going to be back next year, but he's already committed to LMU to play baseball after graduation. So Branson, Wade, you can hang on me a second. We'll clap at the end. We next have Becker, Becker Sabirsky. Becker is being honored today as the Pacific Coast Conference MVP, so the best baseball player in the entire conference. Becker was our starting shortstop and one of our starting pitchers. He was without a doubt the team leader. His work ethic is unmatched. He knows, I've said this to him so many times, he's just a competitor. You just got to love him. He's that throwback kid, that throwback player. He was the unanimous winner of the Player of the Year for our conference, unanimous. Every coach in the league said, yes, this is the guy. That doesn't happen very often. Becker was selected to play in the North versus South All-Star Game, the Orange County game. It was last night. We won. And Becker, Becker decided to have himself a night. He went two-for-two with a double, and he pitched a scoreless, two strikeouts, so did a pretty good job. So did a pretty good job. We're proud of Becker and what he's done for our program. Becker will continue playing baseball at the New Jersey Institute of Technology, and he will study mechanical engineering. He's a pretty darn good student, too. Becker, nice job. Okay. Beach volleyball, Kyra Zangle. Kyra, stand, move forward. So our beach volleyball had an incredible season. I forgot to say the baseball team won. Did I mention they won the league championship? We won the league championship. Beach also won the league championship. We're going to get kicked out of this league because we're winning too much. The girls volleyball team went 8-0 in league and 16-3 in overall, overall, and qualified for the Division One playoffs, as did baseball, qualified for the Division One playoffs. That's a big deal as a small school. I'm just going to say it. I say it all the time, but I'm proud of our athletes. Kyra was named the Pacific Coast Conference Beach Volleyball Player of the Year for the entire conference. And Kyra, honestly, she's just an athlete. She could have played any sport and been great. My husband coaches football, and after watching her play volleyball, he said I could have turned her into a lockdown corner, but she wasn't interested in football. Kyra was named to the USA Beach Volleyball Under-19 National Team, one of only eight athletes nationwide that was named to that team. She's going to play USC in the fall. USC's got one of the premier, probably the premier, beach volleyball programs, and that's where she's going to compete next year. So thank you, Kyra, for everything you've done. Okay. Our women's water polo athletes, Kara Carver, Sienna Jumani, and Presley Jones. Step forward. Kara could not be here tonight, but these three young women have represented Laguna Beach their entire lives. They grew up playing together in youth programs all the way through. They've won countless national championships and represented Laguna at an international level. This year, they led the girls' water polo team to the hard-fought Division One CIF championship, and it was the storybook ending that these girls deserved. The game was just crazy. I'm not going to go through all of it, but I was a nervous wreck, and I wasn't playing. I don't know how they did what they did, but we won in overtime, and Presley scored the winning goal. It was just incredible. So great job, girls. Kara was First Team All-CIF, and she was just a spark of energy on the team. She was good for a pep talk when the girls needed it, and she's going to continue to play at USC next year. Presley Jones was named CIF Player of the Year for Division One. She was named the Pacific Coast Conference MVP for Women's Water Polo for the whole conference. And then she was named recently the Pacific Coast Conference Female Athlete of the Year for all sports. So an incredible honor. Presley was that calm, steady, dependable leader. She played the same, and her demeanor was the same in a scrimmage or in the CIF championship game. Like, the girl was unflappable. She's going to be playing water polo at UCLA next year. She's going to be my favorite Bruin. I don't like the Bruins, but you're my favorite Bruin. And then finally, we have Sienna Jumani. Sienna was First Team All-CIF Division One, and then she was also named the Pacific Coast Conference Goalie of the Year. Sienna's the glue that held it all together for us. She was the voice of the team and the last line of defense. Sienna's someone who you're glad is there for you in the toughest moments. She's going to be continuing to play water polo at the University of Santa Barbara. And then the final thing I want to say before I have you guys step back is Coach Teetz is in the audience, and Coach Teetz was named the CIF Division One Coach of the Year. We're very proud of her. Thank you, girls. Thank you. Even though Coach Thomas is not here, our boys soccer coach, he was also named the CIF Division Four Coach of the Year, and he was named the Orange County Register Coach of the Year for Boys Soccer. So that was a great, great accomplishment. I'm going fast, I promise. I know you guys have been sitting here for a long time, but I really want to give these kids their honor. So the next athlete is our single diver at Laguna Beach High School, Chase Ship. Chase. Chase has been an incredible competitor for four years. He's the Pacific Coast Conference Dive Champion this year. He was the CIF Champion this year, and he's actually a four-time league champion. So he's won the league championship all four years and a two-time CIF champion. It's incredible what he's accomplished. Chase also competed for our swim team. He's broken his own school diving records every year. That's a great way to go. Hey, that guy was no good. I'm going to beat him this year. His hard work and dedication in club diving, high school diving, and in the classroom has earned him an opportunity to dive for Harvard next year. Not too bad. Congratulations, Chase. Girls' basketball, Kate. Kate Chang, step up. Kate was the leader of our undefeated league champion girls' basketball team, the first championship for girls' basketball in 10 years. She averaged 16 points and seven assists per game, and she was recently voted to play in the Orange County All-Star Game next month. I played in that about 100 years ago, Kate. Kate served as a team captain multiple years, and she's a four-year varsity player, and she's going to attend the UCI in the fall. Kate Chang. And I realize I jumped the gun on mentioning Andy Thomas. So our soccer players, Max Garner, Dylan Petrie-Norris, Julian Reichel, and Luke Singer. Step forward. I honestly don't know which CIF championship was the most exciting, girls' water polo or boys' soccer, so I'm going to say it was a tie. They had a dream season, the championship game. Anybody out here was at that game? Anybody raise your hand? Yeah, it was pretty incredible. The game was tied 0-0 after regulation. It was tied 0-0 after two overtime periods. Again, it was stressful. After the overtime periods, the game would be decided by penalty kicks. After four kicks, it was still tied. Are you kidding me? And then they went first, and they went up and missed, and Max Garner saved the day and kicked the winning goal. So Max was the hero of the day. So. The first soccer player to acknowledge is Dylan Petrie-Norris. Dylan, wave your hand. Dylan was First Team All-CIF, obviously, for soccer. He was the playmaker who created a lot of chances for Julian. Because of that, he had a lot of creativity in his passing. He always made the right choice, always made the right choice, and he led by example. Dylan's going to be attending Tulane University in the fall. Congratulations. Luke Singer, let them know who you are, good-looking guy. Luke was also named First Team All-CIF. He was our defensive specialist and was voted Defensive MVP by his teammates. He was a consistent player. He was ferocious. According to Coach Thomas, he won every ball in the air. I don't know if that's true. We're going to check that fact-check that. That's pretty incredible. And had a couple of really pivotal goals and assists that saved us in the playoffs. Luke got some interest from some D1 programs, but he's going to be attending Cal Poly Slow in the fall. Congratulations. Max Garner, Max. Everybody, we already saw him. Max was also First Team All-CIF. He led the offense with an unselfish attitude, a willingness to pressure opponents, which created mistakes, which resulted in good things for us. And I know that forever, and you have the permission of everybody in this room, you get to tell the story about your game-winning goal as much as you want. Your grandchildren need to sit and be patient and listen to it. Congratulations, Max. Trust me, you tell it too many times, they're going to start rolling their eyes at you, but tell it anyway. Okay. And then Julian Reichel. Julian, raise your hand. Julian. Julian was First Team All-CIF, Pacific Coast Conference MVP, and he was the CIF Player of the Year for Division Four. So incredible accomplishments. Julian was a game changer with his ability to turn half-chances into goals. He was the team's top scorer and a strong leader. He motivated his teammates in practices, in games, and in the locker room. He wasn't, we wanted him to be a little bit better of a student. He only, I think he had like a 4.96 GPA, and in all seriousness, he's this class's valedictorian this year. And Julian has accepted a scholarship to Brown University. So we're very proud of you, Julian. Okay, you guys can step back. And then we have two more students to mention. We have our Pacific Coast Conference Sportsmanship Award winners, Ruby Sampson and Ryan Chang. Will you two step forward? Stand. Act like you like each other. Okay. Ruby and Ryan were selected for the Pacific Coast Conference Sportsmanship Award for their demonstration of great character. They were honored at a recent breakfast held by the conference. And one of the things that was apparent immediately was that this award wasn't going to a great kid, but not necessarily a great athlete, because both of these individuals are great athletes. Both Ruby and Ryan have achieved at very high levels in their athletic careers at Laguna Beach High School. So starting with Ryan. Ryan was a team captain and a player who always led by example for our boys' basketball program. His teammates look up to him, and they seek his advice. He's someone they know they can trust. Ryan had a couple of really catastrophic injuries in his high school career, and you would never notice anything from his attitude and effort. Always carried just himself in a very positive way. He finished third in the county in three-pointers made this season and was the team MVP. And he played varsity basketball all four years. I even heard he wrote a children's basketball skill book. I'd like to see that. He's in a band called Up to No Good, which I'm a little concerned about that name. It doesn't fit you, but we'll talk about that later. Ryan's going to attend UC Irvine in the fall, and he's considering pursuing a career as an elementary teacher or counselor, and he's going to be great. Ryan Chang. Last but not least, we have Ruby Sampson. Ruby's been instrumental, instrumental to the growth of our girls' lacrosse program, probably one of our most populated girls' programs in our athletic department. We started as a JV squad four years ago when she was a freshman. She probably single-handedly recruited 50% of the roster as it stands now. She's been recognized by the players for her leadership, paying special attention to the younger players and making sure they feel that positive connection to the program. And she's pretty darn good at lacrosse as well. Last year as a junior, she was named First Team All-CIF. We haven't gotten Spring Sport All-CIF announcements yet, but I'm sure she has a chance this year as well. Ruby grew up surfing, loves to surf, and she wanted to share her love of the ocean with other kids who may not have that opportunity, so she started a nonprofit three years ago to help underprivileged kids have an opportunity to enjoy and love surf the way she does. And Ruby's, Ruby also a pretty darn good student. She's going to be a Trojan next year, going to USC. Fight on, Ruby. I'm going to miss you. Here for Ruby. I really am almost done. I promise. So lastly, we have four award winners. These students knew why they were being honored tonight, but they don't know about this. It's the first place that we're announcing it publicly. Every year since the inception of Laguna Beach High School, the athletic department has named a male and female Scholar-Athlete of the Year and a male and female Athlete of the Year. And so this year, I want to let you know that our Female Scholar-Athlete of the Year is Kate Chang. Our Male Scholar-Athlete of the Year is Julian Reichel. Our Female Athlete of the Year is Presley Jones. And our Male Athlete of the Year is Chase Ship. So. The athletes are nominated by their coaches, and they're voted upon by the entire Laguna Beach High School staff, and those were the award recipients. So congratulations. You guys are going to be forever being in our record books. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
At this point in time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Kelly Shear to the podium to present our CTE pathway completers.
Sorry. Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing our CTE pathway completers this year. There's 79, so I hope you're nice and comfortable because I have a speech for each of them as well. Oh, yeah. I'm just kidding. But this is a huge achievement, and some of you may not be familiar with CTE pathways. But we have eight different pathways on campus, and we have 11 other pathways that are available after school through our partnership with our ROPCCA. And so it provides our students an opportunity to do high-rigor college preparatory classes along with technical training and skill development, industry certifications, and also the opportunity in many of our courses to earn free college units for taking the class at the high school. These, to be a pathway completer, you have to complete two years of that pathway. So there's a concentrator class where they start, and then they have to finish the second year, which is their capstone. So it's a big commitment, especially with our students that have so many other things going on, that they have dedicated two years of study to this particular career pathway. And many of them have gone on to take extra offerings in that pathway, so they end up maybe taking that same pathway all four years. So it is a really great achievement. They also get on their transcript a pathway designation that indicates to colleges or employers that they completed this dedicated study over the course of two years in that particular pathway. So it really helps just demonstrate that achievement to colleges and possible employers. So we're going to, I'm going to call you by your pathway, and then if you're here, please come up, and we're going to, then Ms. Romero will get you guys lined up for the picture at the end, okay? I will apologize in advance for saying any names wrong. Sorry. Okay, we're going to start with our CTE automotive pathway. Sebastian Torres. All right. CTE Aviation Operations. Ariana Nikai? Nikah? Sorry. Chloe Vaskova. Our CTE Dance and Choreography Pathway. Giselle Barajas. Tatum Brennan. Rita Capone. Malia Dole. Sam O'Neill. Alexia Sarkisian. Our Engineering Design Pathway. Jai Dan Adamborough. Kate Chang. Gail Montoya. Lucen Reed. Charles Roop. Becker Sabirsky. Vincent Wallstein. Zachary Wang Hung. Fashion Design. Analia Kavaka. Okay, this is our biggest group, Graphic Design. So sorry, there will be quite a few here. Melen Avakane? Sorry. Valentino Bits. Zoe Bond. Natalia Khalif. Brendan Carter. Jordan Cassolari. Kai Fong. Viana Gardito Medina. Quinn Halloran. Annika Haskin. Aiden Hoffman. Annabelle Holdsworth. Nicholas Jensen. Rachel Jolly. Zayed Kavar. James Kramer. Alistair Lee. Dylan Lidstone-Sweet. Ocean Papa. Carolina Polatsky. Quinn Riley. Felix Robbins. Jonathan Scampini. Dylan Siriani. Colton Tonkovich. Kingsley Wade. And Dylan Williams. Our Patient Care Pathway. Hi-Jen Adamborough. Ava Chadha. Selena Su. Delaney Madgen. Kiana Mohissini. Lucy Rowley. Taylor Swit... Oh, sorry. I am so sorry, Taylor. Taylor Smith. I am so sorry. Taylor Tafrishi. Trenton Tran. Brighton Welch. And our Professional Theater Pathway. Mason Bruder. Arianna Cunningham. Systems Programming or Computer Science. Kayan Arshidi. Christian Callahan. Nicholas Camacho. Are we doing okay still? Picture? Okay. Ariana Ghon. Dylan Grant. Gavin Green. Reese Hill. Aiden Hunhausen. Benjamin Jetzer. Tristan Lee. Danielle Nagy. Katia Nguyen. Max Rodensheimer. Teddy Rubin. William Theory. And our last pathway, Visual Commercial Arts. Mason Bruder. Ayah Hamud. Charlie Jerabek. Sam O'Neill. Ella Veloria. And Eva Witkop. Congratulations to all of you.
All right. Congratulations, students. At this time, I'd like to honor the students that participated in the Orange County Arts for All art competition. This is an art competition that represents student artwork and getting it out into the community in various locations, like Crystal Court, other fine art museums, and also displays throughout Orange County. Our honorees include Tricia Duale, Berlin Fox, Jaden Wang, Sam O'Neill, Mary Jane Pina, Evie Rowe, Easton Trozak, Brighton Welch, and Rio Wisely. At this time, I'd like to honor our students that participated in the Student Support Collective. I'll call them up, and then I'll speak a little bit about what the Student Support Collective means to our campus. The honorees are Bailey Bina, Nico Camacho, Ryan Chang, Katherine Jordan, Delaney Mangan, Lauren Norx, Jaclyn Sabah, and Sophia Udoj. So when we talk about emotional wellness and student support, our students are essential in that, and that's what the Student Support Collective does. It's a comprehensive program to foster a safe, supportive, and inclusive school environment. Through partnership and participation and peer-to-peer support, mental health, awareness initiatives, and proactive wellness strategies, the Student Support Collective empowers students to navigate socio-emotional challenges and promotes a thriving school community. So thank you for all your help in that. Appreciate it. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize some of our Theater Arts awardees and honorees. And if you haven't been to any of our musicals or play productions on our campus, I'd invite you to attend. They're amazing. We have a variety of LBHS Theater Awards. Best Choreography in a Play, Cappy's nominee, Katherine Jordan. Choreography in a Play, Cappy's nominee, Maris Morgan. Best Female Vocalist, Cappy's nominee, Lauren Norris. Is there another Lauren out there? No. Best... Oh, is Ms. Marshall here? Oh, Ms. Marshall. Please come up. She was MIA for a little bit, so I left off right here. You're welcome to... You want me to get rid of this?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Dr. Alman. I've been hiding in the back with the techies, like we do in theater. For those that don't know me, I'm Megan Mingas Marshall. I'm the theater teacher at the high school. I've also had the privilege this year of working at both the elementary schools for theater enrichment. And we've done some pretty amazing things this year at the high school. I won't make you guys stand up there for too long. But first, I would like to start by recognizing our entire theater program for earning second place for our fall play, Trap. And that was for the South OC and San Diego area for something called SITA. We were .06 away from first place. So, big honor. And we also placed in the top 10 at the Macy Awards for our musical Nine to Five. So we started a little bit with our Cappy Awards, and I will continue where we left off. We have JoJo Lieber, Best Male Vocalist. We have Rita Campano and Anna Sanquist, Best Stage Management in a Musical. Maris Morgan for Best Supporting Actress in a Musical. And our Cappies, Commandees were the following four students. Mason Bruder. Amelie Ford. Mallory Keller. And Anna Sanquist. So these were our nominees. And then we found out our winners more recently, which were Anna and Rita for Best Stage Management in a Musical. Our Nine to Five marketing team, which consisted of Lauren Norx, Maris Morgan, Mallory Keller, and Sam O'Neill. And lastly, Best Female Vocalist, Lauren Norx. All right, you guys can sit down, but most of you are coming right back up. So... Next, we are going to acknowledge the students who qualified to compete at the international level due to their scores on their competition pieces at the California State Thesbian Festival. Each year, we travel as a theater group to the festival to compete against students across the state. These students are Sam O'Neill and Mallory Keller for duet acting. Mason Bruder, Mallory Keller, and Maris Morgan for solo acting. Oh, I forgot Lauren as well for solo acting. Lauren Norx for solo acting. And then for solo musical theater, we had Tatum Brennan, Maris Morgan, and Lauren Norx. And then lastly, I wanted to recognize our Macy's recipients. So Macy's, they're really fun. They don't tell us who gets what until we go. And we just went last week, so I have a little bit of an update for you. I'm going to go off-script a little bit here. Were you... Yeah, go sit down and then come right back up. It's fine. We received 23 awards this year. First being... Thank you. First being qualifying in the top 10 for the entire production of Nine to Five. Special recognition awards went to Oliver Rankin, Frederick Butler, Luke Donaldson, Tristan Lee, and Callan Wheaton. Then the next category up, which is called a Bright Spot Award, went to Taylor Peterson, Katherine Jordan, and Eliana Merritt. And our Achievement Award went to Mallory Keller. Then our Outstanding Awards went to JoJo Lieber and Mason Bruder. And then lastly, or second to lastly, our highest achievements went to Sam O'Neill, Lila Taclin, Maris Morgan, and Lauren Norx. At the Macy's as well, Lauren and Maris were nominated for the Best Actress category, which is a super high honor. And to close out the event on Sunday, we found out that Lauren actually won Best Actress. So for the non-theater people in the room, I will explain what this means to win Best Actress at the Macy's. This qualifies her for the prestigious Jimmy Awards. For those that aren't familiar, the Jimmy's is the National High School Musical Theater Competition, and it's hosted at Juilliard, which is the school of schools for the arts, and has led to the discovery of some of Broadway's most prominent and successful performers. This is the second time in the history of Laguna Beach High School that we have received this honor, last time being in 2012. And this is something beyond my wildest dreams. This is the theater teacher here. And please join me in congratulating Lauren. She's headed to New York next week, a week from today, to compete at the Jimmy's. Thank you, and I hope to see you all at our shows in the fall.
Could we have all of our Theater Arts nominees and awardees back up at the front of the room for a picture, please? Thank you. And my final arts recognition this evening is one that is more local, but also celebrated countywide. And those are the Orange County Festival of Arts Showcase at LCAD. And I'd like to welcome Eliana Merritt up. And part of the 3D Ceramics OC Arts for All Showcase, Harper Hunt. And the Ceramics Festival of the Arts Junior Art Exhibit, Mila Davis. We'll have a special sign, Harper. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Mayberry and Mr. Dixon up to the podium for our LCAP honorees.
Good evening. Thank you. One of the important things we do as the district administrators is we develop what we call a Local Control and Accountability Plan, or better known as the LCAP. But it's really just a strategic plan for continuous improvement for our students. But the key piece of the plan is our key stakeholders, which is our students. And so we strive to center the student voice in that. One couple of ways we do that is students are a major part, the majority of our advisory groups. They're in student focus groups. They're also on panels when we are doing our data collection. And so, along with lots of survey feedback from the students. So we want to take a second or a minute to recognize the students that were part of that process in developing this district strategic plan, where their voice was really essential in the development and improvement that we do each year. So I'd have the following students come up to the front that were either a participant, panelist, or part of a focus group. Sienna Brown. Katie Dartez. Dorian DeKilian. Lucas Farrar. Kaya Gambir. Viana Garido Medina. Teddy Hackett. Stella Hendricks. Kate Hennessy. Inara Herring. Charlie Jerabek. Aleah. Eva Kiani. Ellis Malang. Lily Mccone. Carter McKenzie. Chloe McLaughlin. Taylor Peterson. Lilly Peterson. Juliana Polatsky. Madeline Rutliff. Jaclyn Sabah. Samia Shadal. Brooke Snyder. Reina Sherastani. Adelaide Valerie. Lisette Zingal. Isla Aguilar. Isla Aguilar. Max Garner. Belen Gonzalez. Jack Listem. Seon Lynch. Cameron Westafi. Becker Sibierski. Zoe Tran. And Braylen Velmyer. Thank you so much.
Okay, for our next item or recognition, it's along the same lines of students who help provide their voice to support our district operations and better their learning. So this is, I'd like to recognize the Superintendent Student Advisory Council for this year. And the Student Advisory Council are students from the high school that give up their lunchtimes, usually on a monthly basis, to come meet with the superintendent's office. And in that process, they share their concerns, ideas, anything that they want the district office to know that we can work on, and it is incredibly valuable. It's very candid conversations, and it leads to a lot of change that is, again, directed by the students, and that's who we're here for. So I want to bring them up tonight to recognize their participation, and we really appreciate their time. And that's Kate Hennessy. Selena Su. Kevin Huah. Jaden Huang. Carter McKenzie. Vienna Medina. Alexander Romine. Ms. Weber, come on up. And now I'm gonna invite up President Dee Perry.
Thank you. It is my honor to recognize our two fabulous student board representatives, Kate Hennessy And wait a sec, Carter, I think you wanted to say something. Kate, do you want to say something too? Okay, okay.
Thanks, President Perry. I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to express my gratitude for this opportunity that I've had for the past two years. I've been on two very different boards, and I've learned a lot along the way. I want to give a special thanks to, obviously, all the members of the board currently, and a special thanks to Jan Vickers, who really helped me understand board governance, and John Malchesky, who helped me navigate some difficult water. So thanks, guys.
I would just like to thank Kate and Carter both for their service to the Board of Education and to all of us. We've had a great year and a great two years with Carter, and unfortunately, Kate has chosen not to apply and continue for next year, but best wishes on whatever you decide to do next year, and Carter, good luck at-- what's that school again? Oh, yeah, Columbia.
Thank you, everyone. It's wonderful. And now, are there any-- no, we-- yeah, are there any public comments? Mr. Hills? Okay, no public comments. The meeting then is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Can I get a quick motion in a second?
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Great.